All right, welcome. Good evening and welcome to the March 25, 2019, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted that you all are with us this evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley, here. Mr. Duncan, here. Ms. Hardy, here. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder expects to arrive late this evening. Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Sure, thank you. And as you heard, Mr. Snyder's got a work commitment and he will be arriving hopefully shortly. So we've got a busy agenda tonight, a number of proclamations. Before we get started, though, I would ask, is there a motion regarding the meeting agenda, which I think has been amended in a small way to add a proclamation?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda as revised.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. So we are now on to our first of many proclamations this evening. And Ms. Hardy will do the honors. Ms. Hardy, would you like to read our first proclamation?
Delighted, thank you. Whereas while children are valuable resources and will shape the future of our community, they are also vulnerable members of society. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects, and whereas nurturing and attachment, parental resilience, social connections, concrete support in time of need, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and social and emotional competence are protective factors which prevent child maltreatment and help strengthen families; and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of the meaningful partnerships created among families, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community; and whereas the pinwheel is a happy uplifting symbol of childhood, and it serves as a national symbol of child abuse prevention, the planting of the pinwheel garden represents the happy, healthy childhood all children need to survive -- to thrive; and whereas we encourage witness of child abuse and neglect to report it to Child Protective Services at 703-324-7000.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families, thereby preventing child abuse and neglect and strengthening the communities in which we live.
All right, Ms. Vincent, do you have something to say? Welcome.
Thank you. And I do want to thank everybody who stood in the rain to plant the pinwheels that happened this evening at 7:00. Mr. Duncan and Ms. Conley, Mr. Tarter, Ms. Hardy. And also, I want to recognize Leslyn Barrow, who is the city staff who works directly with families, the schools, Child Protective Services, and others. And she and Jeremy Edwards from Urban Forestry, along with Ms. Hardy, did all the heavy lifting for today's event. So we know that child abuse happens, even here in Falls Church. I've heard the heartbreaking stories and have seen the children who have been removed from their families. What we need to do is recognize when families need help before this happens. We need families to feel empowered to ask for help, and we need all residents to feel empowered to make a phone call when they suspect child abuse or neglect. The Child Protective Services hotline is 703-324-7400. And anyone concerned about a child's well-being or who wants to report or discuss a possible neglect or abuse situation, or wants advice, counseling, resources, or help, please call that number. Child abuse occurs in many forms, physical, sexual, and/or emotional. Many child abuse cases arise from situations and conditions that can be preventable, especially when community programs and systems are engaged and supportive. A community that cares about early childhood development, parental support, parental mental health, and more, is likely to foster nurturing families and healthy children. Research has identified factors known to prevent and reduce child abuse and neglect. These factors including parental resilience, nurturing and attachment, social connections, knowledge about parenting and child development, social and emotional competence of children, and concrete supports for children. As a community, we can get involved in building these factors and protecting families and children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the good work you do here in the city. Greatly appreciate it. Our next proclamation is declaring April 2019 as Fair Housing Month, and that will be Mr. Lichtenhouse. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. Whereas fair housing has been the law of the land for 51 years since 1968, and whereas the fair housing provisions in the Code of the City of Falls Church prohibit discriminatory practices in the sale, lease, and financing of housing, it ensures all residents access to fair housing, free from inequity based on race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sex, elderliness, familial status, or disability. And whereas the City of Falls Church as a community and as a government are proud of this shared vision of inclusiveness, which is demonstrated by citizens whose racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds add to the very fabric of the community.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Falls Church, and call upon all citizens to support the city's total commitment to fair housing for all.
All right, welcome. Welcome back. It seemed like you went far, didn't you?
Not very far.
All right.
Thank you. Well, I'm joined here now by Brenda Heffernan, who is the Chair of the City's Housing Commission. And would like to, in addition to the factors that Mr. Lichtenhouse read off that are considered fair housing factors, to let folks know that the city does conduct fair housing testing, and what that involves is having somebody go into various rental properties and posing as a renter based on either race or familial status, elderliness, each of the factors, and kind of determine that way if there's any discrimination going in the city. And all will be happy to know that it's almost always been that fair housing practices are followed by the rental properties here in the city, and we've been very happy with the results.
All right, well, thank you both. Did you want anything to add?
Just wanted to say that not only are we here to recognize fair housing and Fair Housing Month, but it's also a good reminder that it's incumbent upon all of us in the City of Falls Church to affirmatively further fair housing. So that's requiring us to take it one step further, and I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much. We've got the proclamation. Would you all both like to come forward maybe for a photo? Ms. Hardy, would you like to add a thought or two?
I just wanted to make a quick comment, because I think this is my fourth year doing so. I think every year in our adopted legislative agenda, we always request that the General Assembly add LGBTQ status as a protected element with the fair housing laws. And I think for the fourth year in a row, it has not been done in Richmond. So I just wanted to call that out, something that I think the city firmly believes in, but yet Richmond has not done so.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you both. We appreciate it. Our next proclamation is regards to Community Development Month. Maybe you're still going to hang around for that, we appreciate it. Mr. Z is going to do the honors. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. Don't go away. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, has operated since 1975 to provide local governments with the resources required to meet the needs of persons with low and moderate incomes, and the CDBG funds are used by thousands to meet nationwide neighborhood and human services needs. And whereas the CDBG programs help more than 110 city families and individuals this year receive early childhood education, emergency rental assistance, transitional housing, and needed property enhancements, and whereas the City of Falls Church, Virginia, and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer and customize the CDBG program to identify, prioritize, and resolve pressing local problems such as the shortage of affordable housing, neighborhood and human services needs, and physical redevelopments. And whereas the City of Falls Church has several partners in the CDBG program, including Falls Church City Public Schools, Falls Church Community Services Council, Homestretch, Inc., and the Falls Church Housing Corporation, Inc.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Community Development Month in the City of Falls Church, Virginia, and urge all citizens to recognize the Community Development Block Grant program and the important role it plays in the community.
All right. What say you? Do you have anything else to add?
Hello again. Just very briefly, that the city is fortunate to be a sub-receipient of Arlington County and receive these federal funds to really help support our nonprofit partners in the city to provide the services that Mr. Z mentioned. And Ms. Heffernan and the Housing Commission manage that whole process and award the grants and do a really outstanding job every year in making sure that these really needed services are provided to our residents.
All right, well, thank you both. Appreciate it. Do you have another one coming, too?
I think we're good.
All right. All right. So the next one, to thank you. The next proclamation is regards to Equal Pay Day, and Mr. Duncan will do the honors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This proclamation declaring April 2, 2019, as Equal Pay Day. Whereas more than 55 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time year-round in 2017 typically earned 80% of what men earn, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas according to "Graduating to a Pay Gap," a 2012 research report by the American Association of University Women, the gender pay gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling for factors known to affect earnings. And whereas in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, giving employees their day in court to challenge a pay gap, and the AAUW endorses adoption of the Paycheck Fairness Act, which would amend the Equal Pay Act to close loopholes to improve the law's effectiveness. And whereas according to one estimate, college-educated women working full-time earn more than a half-million dollars less than their male peers do over the course of a lifetime. And whereas four in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their households, and nearly 2/3 are primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. And whereas a lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement and less income counted in the Social Security or pension benefit formula. And whereas the 2018 edition of the AAUW's research report, "The Simple Truth About the Gender Pay Gap," shows that in Virginia, women who worked full-time in 2017 typically earned 79% of what men earned. And whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy, and such pay policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas Tuesday, April 2, symbolizes the time in 2019 when wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 2, 2019, as Equal Pay Day in the City of Falls Church, and urge all the citizens of Falls Church to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourage businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly.
All right, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Molly Jewell, and I'm a member of Falls Church AAUW, representing our president, who's out of town on business. And she obviously would like to thank you guys for helping us. And this is not the first time that you have recognized us, so we're grateful for your continued recognition and support for the equal pay for women. This is an issue that needs to be discussed and resolved so that women are no longer disadvantaged in the workplace in their ability to care for their families or their ability to earn, to plan for their futures because of their gender. And on my behalf, because I am the Chairman of the Falls Church AAUW Book Sale, April 12th and 13th, right here in the community center gym, I want to point out that part of the money, a large part of the money that we raise from our book sale is going to AAUW's new salary negotiation workshops. And so this is aimed at both women who are now working and college graduates. So if you know a woman college graduate, have her Google us on AAUW salary negotiation and get her going to earn more money.
That's great.
So thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to receive the proclamation?
Yes, and there's about 10 of us here.
All 10 of you, come on down. Let's do it.
(inaudible) It's good, okay. Great, thank you.
All right. We'll just stay here. We'll buy and we'll be there. We'll stay here until it starts. We'll be first in line. All right, our next proclamation is regards to Local Government Education Week, and Vice Mayor Conley will do the honors.
This is a proclamation declaring April 1 through 7, 2019, as Local Government Education Week in the City of Falls Church. Whereas local governments throughout the Commonwealth provide valuable services to the citizens of the communities they serve. And whereas citizen services such as law enforcement, public health and safety, recreation, and childhood education are delivered at the local level. And whereas in recognition of the work performed by local governments, on February 29, 2012, the Virginia General Assembly designated the first week in April as Local Government Education Week in Virginia. And whereas the nation's first council manager form of government was enacted on April 2, 1908, in the City of Stanton, Virginia, thereby making the first week in April appropriate for this designation. And whereas city government staff and elected officials often share their expertise in classrooms and with community organizations, volunteer at school and community events, mentor students, and provide them with opportunities to volunteer in the city. And whereas the city continues to engage youth in civic engagement learning opportunities such as Operation Earthwatch, community cleanup events, youth representatives on our boards and commissions, scout participation in council meetings, highlighting local government job opportunities during career fairs, and sharing the mathematical skills required for the real-world work of city planners. And whereas the city website, e-focus newsletter, and social media postings provide daily updates on services performed by the City of Falls Church.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 1 through 7, 2019, as Local Government Education Week in the City of Falls Church, and recognize the collaboration between the Falls Church City Government and the Falls Church City Schools to educate students and citizens about their local government as well as engage the next generation of local government leaders.
All right, is there anyone who's going to receive this proclamation? Mr. Shields, you might be the right person. I would say this, I've certainly got a much greater appreciation of all the fine work that local government does, having worked with you and the rest of staff. Local government really is where the rubber hits the road, I think, as far as services, education, all the things we think are important in a community. Really, it's local government is where the action is. So I want to thank you and your staff for the great work you all do, day in and day out for the city.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and it's a privilege to be here to do it. And maybe Cindy Mester and I both could come up to accept this proclamation.
Sure, absolutely.
Because she put this together. She does a lot of work with the Local Government Managers Association, and this is part of that outreach effort.
And our next proclamation will be done by Ms. Hardy, who's done a great deal of work on the pinwheel effort and the like, and so we thank you for that. And why don't you go ahead and read the proclamation regarding sexual assault awareness.
Great. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is a serious problem affecting women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, educational, and economic backgrounds, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in the community. And whereas to increase awareness about this issue and prevent future assaults, the month of April has been designated as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. And whereas the prevention of child sexual abuse is a community priority. And whereas sexual abuse induces psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for survivors of abuse. And whereas we must work together to raise the profile of and educate our community about sexual violence prevention, about supporting survivors, and about the importance of speaking out about abuse. And whereas effective child sexual abuse prevention programs begin with awareness, education, and community involvement, and these programs succeed because of meaningful community partnerships. And whereas the City of Falls Church Police Department seeks to eliminate the prevalence of sexual violence by educating women through a free self-defense class that has educated more than 900 women in risk reduction and self-defense. And whereas preventing sexual violence creates a safer environment for everyone.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2, 2019, as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Falls Church, and call upon all citizens to support the city's total commitment to fair housing for all.
All right, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Molly Jewell, and I'm a member of Falls Church AAUW, representing our president, who's out of town on business. And she obviously would like to thank you guys for helping us. And this is not the first time that you have recognized us, so we're grateful for your continued recognition and support for the equal pay for women. This is an issue that needs to be discussed and resolved so that women are no longer disadvantaged in the workplace in their ability to care for their families or their ability to earn, to plan for their futures because of their gender. And on my behalf, because I am the Chairman of the Falls Church AAUW Book Sale, April 12th and 13th, right here in the community center gym, I want to point out that part of the money, a large part of the money that we raise from our book sale is going to AAUW's new salary negotiation workshops. And so this is aimed at both women who are now working and college graduates. So if you know a woman college graduate, have her Google us on AAUW salary negotiation and get her going to earn more money.
That's great.
So thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to receive the proclamation?
Yes, and there's about 10 of us here.
All 10 of you, come on down. Let's do it.
(inaudible) It's good, okay. Great, thank you.
All right. We'll just stay here. We'll buy and we'll be there. We'll stay here until it starts. We'll be first in line. All right, our next proclamation is regards to Local Government Education Week, and Vice Mayor Conley will do the honors.
This is a proclamation declaring April 1 through 7, 2019, as Local Government Education Week in the City of Falls Church. Whereas local governments throughout the Commonwealth provide valuable services to the citizens of the communities they serve. And whereas citizen services such as law enforcement, public health and safety, recreation, and childhood education are delivered at the local level. And whereas in recognition of the work performed by local governments, on February 29, 2012, the Virginia General Assembly designated the first week in April as Local Government Education Week in Virginia. And whereas the nation's first council manager form of government was enacted on April 2, 1908, in the City of Stanton, Virginia, thereby making the first week in April appropriate for this designation. And whereas city government staff and elected officials often share their expertise in classrooms and with community organizations, volunteer at school and community events, mentor students, and provide them with opportunities to volunteer in the city. And whereas the city continues to engage youth in civic engagement learning opportunities such as Operation Earthwatch, community cleanup events, youth representatives on our boards and commissions, scout participation in council meetings, highlighting local government job opportunities during career fairs, and sharing the mathematical skills required for the real-world work of city planners. And whereas the city website, e-focus newsletter, and social media postings provide daily updates on services performed by the City of Falls Church.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 1 through 7, 2019, as Local Government Education Week in the City of Falls Church, and recognize the collaboration between the Falls Church City Government and the Falls Church City Schools to educate students and citizens about their local government as well as engage the next generation of local government leaders.
All right, is there anyone who's going to receive this proclamation? Mr. Shields, you might be the right person. I would say this, I've certainly got a much greater appreciation of all the fine work that local government does, having worked with you and the rest of staff. Local government really is where the rubber hits the road, I think, as far as services, education, all the things we think are important in a community. Really, it's local government is where the action is. So I want to thank you and your staff for the great work you all do, day in and day out for the city.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and it's a privilege to be here to do it. And maybe Cindy Mester and I both could come up to accept this proclamation.
Sure, absolutely.
Because she put this together. She does a lot of work with the Local Government Managers Association, and this is part of that outreach effort.
And our next proclamation will be done by Ms. Hardy, who's done a great deal of work on the pinwheel effort and the like, and so we thank you for that. And why don't you go ahead and read the proclamation regarding sexual assault awareness.
Great. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is a serious problem affecting women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, educational, and economic backgrounds, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in the community. And whereas to increase awareness about this issue and prevent future assaults, the month of April has been designated as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. And whereas the prevention of child sexual abuse is a community priority. And whereas sexual abuse induces psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for survivors of abuse. And whereas we must work together to raise the profile of and educate our community about sexual violence prevention, about supporting survivors, and about the importance of speaking out about abuse. And whereas effective child sexual abuse prevention programs begin with awareness, education, and community involvement, and these programs succeed because of meaningful community partnerships. And whereas the City of Falls Church Police Department seeks to eliminate the prevalence of sexual violence by educating women through a free self-defense class that has educated more than 900 women in risk reduction and self-defense. And whereas preventing sexual violence creates a safer environment for everyone.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2, 2019, as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating themselves to preventing sexual assault and supporting survivors.
See, before we get a few comments I'd like to make as well, particularly as it relates to child sexual abuse and sexual assault, most of you don't know a single person who's been a victim of child sexual abuse. You know many. They just haven't told you. There's an estimated 42 million child sex abuse survivors in this country. One in three women, girls, one in five boys. On average, there's something like 320,000 cases of child sexual assault a year. 45% wait five or more years to disclose the abuse. Two people that I've been very close to in my life are child sex abuse survivors. Both had lasting scars, one attempted suicide. It's not good enough to shine a light on this issue one day a year. We must be ever vigilant. We must educate ourselves and our children. We must support survivors and not be afraid to talk about the scourge, this scourge. Silence is not the answer. Sunlight is the best disinfectant. The city takes this issue very seriously and has taken steps to protect our most vulnerable citizens. Some of the city policies and practices include the city employees that work with youth are checked against a central registry maintained by Child Protective Services in addition to getting fingerprints and criminal background checks by the FBI. The city has a mandatory reporting policy to Child Protective Services for any suspected cases of child abuse. City HHF staff and city police have worked to improve communications between the JDR Corps, Juvenile Domestic Relations in Arlington, and CPS, Child Protective Services in Fairfax County, so that cases are handled most effectively. Aurora House Library Youth Service Staff, Recreation and Park Staff are trained on city policies and procedures for reporting suspected abuse. Aurora House staff are trained to provide support to victims of abuse, including victims of trafficking. City police have done specialized training on investigations of child abuse crimes. Human Service Director Nancy Vincent wrote a blog in October about teen dating violence. Leslyn Barrow did one in April about child abuse awareness. City Rape Aggression Defense Course helps women and girls learn how to protect themselves from sexual assault. City police, you may hear from our chief in just a moment, are working to raise awareness with safety and technology outreach to help families reduce risks from online dangers, sexting, and sexual solicitation over electronic devices. Lastly, the city maintains a wealth of information on its website, and I would certainly welcome you all to take a look at that. So thank you for indulging me for a moment or two. Chief, did you have something you wanted to add as well?
I did. I'd like to thank you all for bringing this to our attention. Of course, it's important that we recognize this is one of the most heinous crimes to anybody, crimes against a person. And we would say one in three women and one in five men, but it's probably one of the most under-reported crimes as well. So there's so much more of it going on out there than has been reported, which is just staggering in terms of statistics. In terms of the city, violence against, sexual violence against any person is our top priority. The prevention efforts you've named a few, you know, we teach the rape aggression defense class, and over 900 applicants. We have a class coming this April 23rd and the 24th, the 30th, and May 1st. And if you would like to sign up, check the focus this week where you'll see a link to that signup. We also have Stranger Danger, and again, we've been teaching the RAD for about over 16 years. As far as intervention, I would suggest to parents and particularly in anybody that's been a victim to have those encouraging, opening, supportive conversations between children and parents. Community members in crisis, you need to seek help. There's abundance of resources out there. Our detectives are trained in trauma-informed care, particularly when they're doing investigations, and working with partners, like you said, victim-witness within the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and Child Protective Services. We have members on the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. And we also, of course, enforce the law to the great extent when we do arrest a subject for this. But I applaud you for the pinwheel, for the proclamation, for reading the statistics, and taking a mindful moment in ensuring that the community knows this is an epidemic that we need to keep pushing and keep talking about. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to come forward and receive the proclamation on behalf of our community?
So as one of the 900 people that have taken the RAD class, I would encourage anyone who's thinking about it to give it a try, because I was very intimidated to try it out, but I did it with my teenage daughter, and we both learned a lot. It was really empowering, so I would encourage anyone in the room or anyone watching to sign up and try it out.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to oaths of office. Are there any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right, well, let's move on to public comment. So I guess the first order of business would be summary of written comments. Could you do that for us?
Yes. Stephanie Oppenheimer of 610 North Oak Street wrote to express concern about buildings at the West Falls Church Development blocking natural light to the schools. Tina Ehrman, 226 Nolan Street, wrote to support fully funding the tax relief work groups, option three for tax relief for seniors and the disabled. Stacy Evers, 819 Fulton Avenue, asked council to consider environmental implications when granting special exception entitlements. Christina Goodwin wrote in opposition to the current library renovation plan. Frank Mancucci, 611 North Oak Street, also wrote to express concern about the proposed buildings at the West Falls Church Development blocking natural light to the schools. Vipas wrote in support of the library project proceeding as planned with adoption of funds in the FY '20 budget. John Regus, 301 West Broad Street, wrote with concerns about construction noise near 301 West Broad Street. Justin Kirby wrote with budget suggestions, including adding two dispatcher positions, adding a school resource officer, and funding a public safety reorganization study. The Electoral Board requested a full-time deputy registrar to be included in the FY ' '20 budget. Jesse Lubakis wrote with concerns about electric scooters, and Ms. Hardy responded. Dennis Samansky forwarded an article about the positive economic impact of good tree policies.
All right. Thank you very much. And two other items that I neglected to mention earlier. One is it is Mr. Z's birthday tomorrow. Am I correct on that? So, he always feels good when we sing "Happy Birthday" to him. Anybody else for singing "Happy Birthday" to Councilman Z? Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Dan. Happy Birthday to you. All right. There you go. Congratulations. And I did have a joke that I forgot to say that I'm going to say now, which is something along the lines of proclaiming this month as proclamation month, because we had so many proclamations. I just, I couldn't wait till next year to do that. So, all right. So now we're going to move on to the receipt of public comment. And at the present, I've got three speaker slips. If more folks would like to speak, you're certainly welcome to do so. I would just ask that you fill out a speaker slip in the back of the room, hand it to the clerk, and then she will pass it on to me. When you do get up to speak, if you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to three minutes, we would be greatly appreciative. Right now, again, we have three speakers. Welcome to have more. Our first speaker is Nikki Graves Henderson. Nikki, where are you? Come on down. You're the first contestant here. And we're followed by Tori McKenney.
He put my name on here and didn't put his name on there. So we are coming on behalf of Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation. As you know, we have lots and lots of plans, one of which is the Women's History Walk on the 31st of this month, which is this coming Sunday. I hope you'll all come out and learn something about women we've all heard of and women that we may not have heard of, that have made an impact on our great city. We don't want their memories to be lost, so please bring your children. Let them walk the Heritage Trail, visit the Tanner Hill Civil Rights Monument, and begin to become familiar with the historic sites in their city. Oh, I live at 307 South Maple.
Like I said.
Well, I mean, she really covered that.
I know.
I think next, on your next speaker slip, I'd like to call up the Tori and the whole crew.
All right. Let's do it.
From the Tanner Hill Music Festival.
All right, Tori.
And as Nikki and I step back a little bit, we're turning over things to capable people that hopefully will take it to the, and we're very confident that they will take it to the next level.
All right.
So with that being said, I'm going to let Tori take it from here.
All right. Welcome. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tori McKenney. I live at 206 West Greenway Boulevard. I own the Rockstar Realty Group, and I'm the executive producer, I'm proud to announce, I'm the executive producer of the Tanner Hill Music Festival this year. Behind me is really who's responsible for the success of this upcoming event. And I'm quickly going to just do a quick intro, and then we'll get into it. Well, Ed Henderson is, and Nikki Henderson are patriarch and patriarch of the festival, and thank goodness they haven't abandoned us. And I have Laura Liner, who's the associate producer, co-producer. I have, why don't I just go down the line? This is Dani, our, sorry.
Can you stay at the mic so I can get everybody's names?
Sorry. I got excited. Dani is our George Mason High School intern working on the festival with us. Melissa Roberson is in charge of vending. We're expanding our vending, food vending, and the whole vending throughout the festival. Sarah Osborne Lucia, am I saying that right? Yeah, okay. Not only had me over at her house last night for an incredible dinner, but is also the, one of the designers of the festival this year. Mary Olson, longtime veteran volunteer, works with the talent and is the secretary of our committee. Laura Liner, you met, co-producer. Mary Knizer, another longtime veteran volunteer who's heading up media, marketing with Laura, and finance, helping us with our budget. Flash Gordon is our engineer, production manager engineer, and y'all know Ed and Nikki. So, thank you, council, for having us here today. I am so excited to reveal some of what we're doing. Dani handed out our sponsor package, which is our letter to corporate sponsors, and we have, the second page is the corporate experience, which is all the benefits that they will get. And then the third page is the corporate premise of what they will be providing us monetarily. The next page is our donor experience. So we have all of our levels split into different monetary amounts, and so donors have a donor experience and some benefits, and then the donor premise. And then the last page is the site design. And I'm just going to walk you through that, and then I have a couple questions for the council. So, if you hold it landscape-wise, with Park Ave on the left, this year we're expanding our entrances. We have a second gate being added to Park Ave across from the library to give more exposure to the festival and allowing visitors to enter through that gate. And then when they come in, they'll be ushered by our teary volunteers over to a photo op at the Virginia Love sign. And then they'll proceed down and past the stage and past the playground, and then we have a new kids' village this year, which Melissa and Scarlett from Park and Rec are working on the vending for the kids. So that's being expanded into all sorts of really fun kid activities. Yeah, just like face painting. We're having a water activity, the Swim School by Staples is coordinating a water activity for the kids. Just fun. Bring your children, that's all I can say. They're going to love it. We have the VIP tent again, because we have VIP ticket purchasers who will have covered seating. If you go further up towards the basketball court, we're having a relaxation village, where we will have, gates are at 11:00 AM this year. We'll have yoga around 11:30, so we're having yoga in the park. We have, and that's a free event, we have chair massages most of the day that they're charging. We have a hammock company setting up freestanding hammocks for people to relax in. And I think a couple more things there. We also have an artist's village this year, and so we're working with Falls Church Arts, which Melissa is a member and a photographer, and she's working on signing up artists to participate and sell their wares. The food village is being expanded as well. We have more restaurants from the city who are participating this year. We had Liberty BBQ last year. We have Claire &amp; Dawn's doing kid food and vegetarian food. We are soliciting a pizza, flipping pizza perhaps? And we're talking to them. And the Custard Lady from Maple Ave. And Cafe Kindred is doing iced coffees, iced tea, maybe frozen, I'm not sure. And then the Beer Garden, the Rockstar Beer Garden is actually expanding this year. Excuse me. Oh, we're actually also adding a dining area, picnic tables by the food vending that hasn't been there before. And then the Rockstar Bar is what the Rockstar Beer Garden was before, because we are including beer and wine as before, and Falls Church distillers were hoping, we have to still work on the permit, but we're hoping they'll participate. And then the whole backstage experience is expanding, and that's with the sponsors, the corporate sponsors have all-day access, but the, not the whole corporations, but the number of tickets that we're giving out to those sponsors, those ticket holders get all-day access. And then the whole green room experience, making it more luxurious for our artists. So that is hopefully going to be the Tanner Hill Music Festival this year. So I'm here today not only to reveal that, sorry, I'm also here to ask the city for some help. And hopefully, it's going to be painless and easy for you to do. The first thing I'm asking is, we would like to approach some of the developers in the city to help with the setup. And mainly, Mill Creek, who's doing Founder's Row, who has fencing around their development right now, we're asking for them or one of the other developers to donate the fencing for the festival, to fence in Cherry Hill Park. So I'm asking you, who have worked intimately with Miller Creek, to help get that conversation started and solidify and secure these fence donations. The other thing I want to ask is the city as a whole, the city council, and those who be at City Hall, to help promote the festival. So I'm asking everyone to go to tannerhill.org, and you'll see on the homepage, the "Celebrate" link, and you'll see our logo, the new logo that we've rebranded the festival with. Click on the link, and you'll get more information about the festival there, and that's changing every week. But then I'd also like to invite you all to go to Facebook, and not only like Tanner Hill's page, but also go to the Tanner Hill Music Festival page and like that. And like our posts, and share our posts, and tell everyone you know about the Tanner Hill Music Festival. So thank you for your time, and I hope I'll see you on June 8th at 11:00 AM at Gates. Music starts at noon, and it goes until 9:00 PM this year.
All right. That sounds like one heck of a party. I think we're all going to be there.
We're hoping.
Thank you a lot. We're looking forward to it.
Okay. Any questions? Those are the sponsor packages in your hands that I mentioned are going out to corporate and to our past sponsors and donors. And feel free, I will be distributing it electronically, so feel free to pass it along to anyone you think who might want to support us.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you much. We look forward to it.
And as city is our cosponsors, of course, we'll be coming to you for all kinds of overtime hours for the staff that helps make it happen as well, and I really appreciate our relationship and you all pitching in to help this a great event. So thank you.
All right. All right.
I'll be quick. I also wanted to, I forgot to mention how we are inviting the entire community into the festival this year. We have the George Mason High School Acapella Group opening. It's our opening act at noon. Dani, our intern, secured that. She's the one who also secured the Swim School, kids' village vendor. And we are in, we will be talking through Mary Beth Connolly with the athletic director and other school groups to be volunteers leading up to the event and day of. So we're looking for some of the sports teams to help with load-in, load-out, and ground maintenance during the day to keep the grounds clean, any way we can, you know, involve. Oh, and we have a local dad band that is performing as the second act, so.
All right. Sounds like a great party. We look forward to it. Our last speaker is Bill Wanland. Yeah, come on down. David?
Mayor, City Council, is this on? The green light is on. Okay. Just can't really tell what the others. Bill Wanland, Vice Chair of the Falls Church City Electoral Board, and Dave Burkey, General Registrar and Director of Elections for the City of Falls Church. We are here in order to ask for our deputy position to be made full-time and the funding in which to do so. I'm glad I came on a night in which local government education is on the bill. I have provided with you a late edition, a memo that was written by the Electoral Board and I. Renee Andrews wishes that she could be here. She also sent in a letter for you to read, but she is out of the country. And Linda Nebergall also wishes she could be here, but she could not either. The city is growing. It's growing a lot, and our city turnout in elections is growing and is growing a lot. We keep winning awards for turnout. We keep winning awards for absentee turnout. We are just, the city votes, and it's great, and it's a thing that we like to encourage. The governor has recently signed legislation to allow early voting, no excuse absentee voting, from Saturday to Saturday before the presidential election in 2020. Registrars groups are already trying to plan for this, because it's going to be a very big disruption, and we have no idea the level of turnout. So we are looking at a bunch of these things. I hope you read the memo. I hope you read Renee's letter as to why we need our deputy registrar to become full-time. And now I will yield to Bill.
Thanks, David. I'm Bill Wanland, 1270 South Washington Street in Falls Church. As Dave said, I'm the Vice Chair of the Falls Church Electoral Board, and I believe you've already seen by now the statement provided to the council by our Board Secretary, Renee. As Dave mentioned, she's not with us. She's in the other Vienna, not the one that's our neighbor. But she wrote about the need to convert the position of a deputy registrar from half-time to full-time. Now, I'd like to briefly emphasize a few of the things that Renee made in her statement to you and that Dave has just mentioned. I'm not going to recap all those points, but I will emphasize a few of the reasons the board believes this personnel measure is necessary to ensure the registrar's office continues to operate at the high level we are so proud of. Basically, the duties of the registrar's office, as Dave mentioned, have expanded greatly over time. The amount of laws and regulations that govern voting in the Commonwealth have nearly tripled in the last 20 years. These regulations are there, of course, to try to make the elections run smoothly and fairly, but it requires a fully engaged staff that can identify and apply those regulations. And the technology is changing. As the council well knows, we're extremely grateful for your quick and supportive action a couple of years ago in 2016, when we needed new equipment to meet the new standards the state was requiring of us, and they gave us a very tight deadline to do so. Making sure that equipment is maintained and ready for the elections, that the latest software and security protections are functioning, and that we get the service that we taxpayers have paid for and expect is largely the responsibility to the deputy registrar. Now Dave, for years, has promoted early voting as a way of giving citizens the greatest possible opportunity to voice their electoral preferences. In 2018, as Dave mentioned, we once again had the highest percentage voter turnout of all cities in the Commonwealth, and are among the state leaders in the percentage who vote absentee. That's great, but it makes Dave a victim of his own success. Getting these results increases the pressure on him and his small staff. The deputy plays a major role in the early voting process, and it's going to get bigger by next year's presidential, when Virginians will be able to vote early without having to provide a reason. It's a good progressive step the Commonwealth has taken, and it's one that's going to need the full use of an experienced staff. Citizens of Falls Church are very engaged politically, as this council knows well. They expect their elections to run smoothly. The volunteer poll workers who serve the voters on Election Day do a superb job, but they need and deserve a fully functioning staff in registrar's office to back them up. Electoral Board is asking you to upgrade the deputy registrar position to full-time to reflect her duties and responsibilities. It's not a half-time job anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to our community, both of you. We appreciate it. All right. Are there any questions? If not, all right.
So Dave and Bill, thank you for advocating for that, and thank you for all the good work to kind of maintain our super-high voter turnout. I think it's one of the things we're really proud about in Falls Church. As with every budget request, I think people up here know that I like to ask for data. Do you have ratios for kind of the number of registrars we have per population for other localities in Virginia, just so we can weigh that request against all the other competing budget demands?
Ratios for?
I assume it's population-based. Maybe in a bigger jurisdiction, you might have more full-time registrars? Or is it a static number regardless of how big a jurisdiction is?
My understanding, there may be handful of jurisdictions that do not have a full-time deputy, but if there are, it's a handful. Otherwise, every other jurisdiction has a full-time deputy. But yeah, we can certainly get that information.
Great. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Lichtenhouse and Vice Mayor Connolly.
Dave, excuse my ignorance, but what does a deputy registrar do? Like, what's the day-to-day? Walk me through that.
I'm glad you asked.
You've got a visual.
The deputy registrar has to be able to step in when the general registrar can't do the job, whatever the reason. You know, it could be, bus hits me. Deputy registrar's got to sit in and do the job. We've had a very good relationship with part-time assistants that work as needed, but the job is getting harder and more. And while we have tried to keep up with the part-time, as-needed people, it's becoming more difficult because they don't have the education and the experience necessary to actually help voters and candidates when it's time. So everything that I know how to do- So, everything that I know how to do, the deputy, our current deputy knows how to do and needs to know how to do. And that includes warehouse operations, FOIA compliance, polling place management, GIS coordination. Every 10 years, we have got to do redistricting and that includes us. Voter education, absentee mail centers, ballot preparation, officer of election pay, not even just the, getting the officers, but paying them. Campaign finance, emergency operations, voter registration by mail, got to be a data analyst, an absentee vote center, IT and cybersecurity, records retention, online voter registration, contingency planning, budget analysts, voting equipment programmer, office, officer training coordinator, candidate guidance, customer call center, and of course, the 428 election laws in Virginia code.
So, just looking at page 104 of the budget, your org chart looks like a telephone pole, right? So, there's, doesn't seem to be a whole lot of support there. So, is it safe to say, I'm not going to use the get-hit-by-a-bus example, God forbid that happens to you, but all of the things that you just listed off, if you got a sick day, something happens and the, the heat of the moment during an election process, all you have right now is that part-time registrar?
We have a half-time deputy and we have a part-time, two-hours-a-day-for-lunch assistant registrar.
Got it. Thanks.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly.
Just a couple, so I'm reading this letter and I'm just a little confused about how much money is tied to this ask. So, you're requesting $43,000. Is that to turn the current position into a full-time position?
Correct.
So, an additional $43,000 for the current person?
Correct.
Okay. But then what's the 11,000? We're saving 11,000?
The 11,000 is how much we spend for our current storage needs off-site.
Oh, so that would be a saving, an offset savings?
This could be a savings. Now, we have three part-time, as-needed assistants.
Right.
With a full-time deputy, we can reduce the number. So, while it will not even out, the 43,000 will not even out with our reduction there or the saving of the 11,000, but I do believe it will reduce.
Okay.
Because we won't, we'll still have them as needed because there will be times when the deputy and I need to go to trainings and to conferences. But right now, they're being used weekly because while the deputy's job duties require more than the 20 hours a week that she's working, she's not coming in to do the job because the job isn't there for her to do. And so, I'm bringing in the part-time assistants to do, to do other work that they have been trained for.
Okay. And so then my last question is, your last letter here says hiring an entry-level registrar position would cost the city much more.
Yeah.
So, the other option would be to keep one person part-time and add another person full-time?
At the, at the minimum, what we're asking for is to have full-day office coverage. So, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the minimum, but it would be really helpful if that minimum could be met also with the experienced level of a 10-year deputy registrar.
I still don't understand all that sentence. Hiring an entry-level would cost the city much more.
Well, wouldn't it?
I don't know. Does, an entry-level person is, costs more than a full-time 10-year, 10-year position? That's my confusion.
We would keep the, the half-time deputy position.
Okay.
And add a full-time assistant.
Got it. Got it. Okay. And is this, you're saying this needs to take place by the 2020 election because of, I mean, you'd like it now.
That, well, no, that's, that was, that's an example of what we're getting ready for.
Okay.
Because there's a lot more going into, again, I can read the list of everything that we do.
Right, right.
You know, we have grown, we've doubled our, our size in 20 years. So, our duties are increasing every, all the time. So, I am requesting this for July 1st of this year.
But if we are not able to do it this year, then next year would be...
Ooh, it's going to be tough, but...
Just need to know all the facts, all the data.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So, let me ask you, the 43,000, does that include benefits as well?
The, the deputy is currently receiving benefits at, so it'd be a .5 to a 1.0.
Yeah, but so I'm saying though, 43, is that just a salary amount or does that also include benefits?
I believe that includes benefits.
That's inclusive salary and benefit compensation.
So, that's everything? It's retirement contributions, the whole nine yards?
Yep.
Okay.
FICA, so forth.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sure. No problem.
Okay. All right. Let's keep on moving. So, let's go on to our next item on the agenda, which is the Tree Commission Annual Report. Welcome. Come on up, Dennis.
I'll do it.
Hey, man. We're going to be here for a while longer, so no sympathy from us.
I, I can't say I'll be as entertaining as Tori, but I hope to be as informative. So, Mayor Charter, Vice Mayor Connolly, members of council. I'm here today on behalf of the citizen volunteers of the Tree Commission to give you an overview, the highlights of our 2018 activities and then to give you a thumbnail of what we plan to do in 2019. Our vision for the urban forest is that it provides the residents of Falls Church with benefits such as moderating the local climate, managing stormwater and a connection to nature and the environment. In return, the public is actively engaged in leveraging city government to maintain a robust tree canopy and attractive landscape in all areas of the city. In 2018, the results of our advocacy, as you've heard me say before, were two strategic losses in the area of tree canopy and mature trees in mixed redevelopment projects. However, we are encouraged by the commitment of the Falls Church City Public Schools to tree canopy and green space for the new George Mason High School project and have mixed reactions to presentations made by the Falls Church Gateway Partners as we continue to advocate for trees, landscape and green space on the West Falls Church project. On mature tree preservation, we've served as a sounding board for a number of citizens who came to our meetings to express their increasing concern about the loss of mature trees in residential redevelopment and what they consider to be the city's apparent inability to prevent that removal. Talk about that more in a minute. Red oaks are among the most popular species in the city. There's about 350 red oaks in the city. We've identified a bacterial disease that threatens their long-term existence. An approach is being developed by the urban forestry staff to address a portion of the population and will bring an action plan to a council work session in 2019. We reviewed site plans for Big Chimneys Park done by Revolvo and, as I said, the high school and West Falls Church and made recommendations. In education and outreach, I came to you once before and talked about this booklet that was produced in concert with the Village Society and with the city arborist funded by the Village Society. In the area of it's never too early to learn about trees and the environment, Kate Reich and I sat down with Ms. Reich's second graders at TJ at their invitation and it was an experience we thoroughly enjoyed. Some of their questions even had to do with trees. They asked just the best questions. We would be happy to do it again. For 2019, we'll continue to participate in plan reviews and advocate for green infrastructure improvements wherever we are able. We'll work with city staff and the Village Society to find ways to protect more mature trees during residential redevelopment. An update to the city's inventory of trees will provide us better data for mapping and reporting. Review tree canopy coverage data and provide the arborist, support the arborist in production of an urban forest strategic plan. Work with city staff to develop green space requirements for commercial and mixed-use projects. Continue our partnership with the ESC on matters affecting the environment, including advocating for onsite stormwater management and sustainability. And finally, we'll continue to monitor emerging recommendations from the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments that can be used to address challenges and threats to the urban forest. On personal note, I am doing my reading for tonight. I noted that you have reappointed me for three more Tree Commission. I look forward to doing, to working with you on that, as I hope you do. Very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your zealous promotion of trees and the urban environment. So, we greatly appreciate that. Mr. Z, I think, has the first question for you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you Chairman Semansky for your leadership and your grace under sometimes very difficult circumstances when you would appear to be the only voice in the forest talking about the trees. But I, I think the, the city is aptly called a tree city. We all care about our trees, so it's just that most people don't know what to do about it. And so, thanks to efforts of people like you, we do move forward on, on making sure that our new developments have that sensitivity as well as preservation of our mature canopy. Thank you for bringing that up with respect to what COG is attempting to develop this year. The red oak bacterial leaf scorch is something that bothers me in particular because it requires money to maintain the public trees. And so, even though a budget for that hasn't been yet developed, I think that you can rest assured that when we, when you present a plan, the city arborist presents a plan to us to maintain our red oak canopy, to stabilize the situation and other emerging requirements, that you'll be well-heard and well-supported. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Z. Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Dennis. So, we've exchanged a lot of things online. It's nice to have you here face-to-face. And reading the report, I highlighted and scratched some notes in a couple of places that I'd just like to make sure I understand. So, let's talk about the, the Falls Church Gateway Project. It seems, you know, like on page five, we're encouraged by the commitment of FCCPS tree canopy and green space in the new campus project. Okay, that's good. And then there's more language about the good things that you see there. But then on page nine, we talk about a disappointingly vague commitment in that same project to the ideals that you hold dear. And yet, we're encouraged, it says, by the initial presentations made by the Gateway Partners. So, we're, you know, we're getting ready to lock in on this project in the next six weeks. So, do you feel like things are going well? Does the, or does the needle more twink towards, you know, encouraged by, or are we still at the disappointingly vague status right now?
I was not able to attend the town hall. Yes, Sunday. I, I chose to watch the Tennessee-Iowa game.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you pulling our guys through.
I was pulling for, for the volunteers, Mr. Duncan.
I know. Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
Heart was with Iowa. So, what I would, what I would say is that with each increasing public meeting and disclosure of information, I think we're learning more. I, I know that Kate attended the public meeting and, and had, I think, some more measured thoughts about the things that the partners are doing. But I believe that we still want to push for more green and advocate for that because we believe that that's what the community needs. Balance has to come from the leadership going forward. To some extent, they put about as many trees as they can on, on the property, but there are other things we think they can and should do.
Okay. Well, you know, let's just keep the pedal to, the pedal to it on that because, I mean, it's not like things can't change when we get into special exception site plan, but you know, the conceptual plan is becoming more concrete and specific. And I think, at least when I listened to their presentation on Sunday, I felt like some of the concerns that you and others have raised were beginning to be answered. I don't know if there's going to be a one-for-one replacement of every tree that's up there now with a new tree, but I, I feel like that is, that's an objective that, that at least some people have. You know, when we, when we do these big-scale developments, you know, the first thing that happens is all the trees go. That's just the way it is. You know, it happened at Founder's Row. Obviously, it would happen at Broad and Washington. And the difference between those two smaller space-constrained sites and this one up at the west end is that there's a little more room to plant a grove, Memorial Grove, other trees, you know, the, the plans they call for 120. I don't know if that's going to, you know, achieve your canopy objectives or not, but I guess I would say, you know, keep pushing because I feel like you're making some progress. At some point in 2021, all the trees at the corner of Haycock and Route 7 are going to be taken down. And, and that's, although I've asked, you know, for a design that would not do that, that's just not going to happen. The trees are going to go. And the question is, are they going to be replaced by, you know, trees that will mature into bigger trees over the, you know, 50, 70-year lifespan of that building? Which leads me to the second thing I wanted to ask about, which is on the residential side. Your report speaks to concerns about tree removal when a little house like mine gets torn down and replaced with a mega house. And that is a, that's a, that's what I hear the most about. I, I really feel like that is hitting people where they live, literally. And, and I would encourage you to, while the bullet points that are in this report are, you know, interesting, I think we need to have a high-level summit where we talk about, you know, should we change the city's percentage of lot coverage number? Should be, should be, we be requiring of residential developments the same kind of underground water capture that we require of the bigger commercial developments? Because these quarter-acre lots were designed with, you know, little houses and big yards and they're being obviously supplanted by enormous houses and very small yards, which don't take in and hold the water that they did when the little houses were there. And I've asked the city attorney, you know, what can we do? What does Richmond allow us to do? That's a conversation we're just beginning because we have some other things on our plate right now. But in the next year, I hope that your commission, Urban Forestry, will, you know, engage in dialogue with us and see if there's some things that we can do in the residential areas that will help folks who are having, you know, water problems in their basements and in their yards that are not unrelated to the intensity and frequency of rain events because of global climate change, but, but that are to some degree caused by obvious, you know, large houses going up next door and running rain off at a level that we've never seen before. Okay. Thanks. Oh, I just wanted, on the library, I expect that there are a handful of trees there on the east side, west side, sorry, that are going to go as part of that renovation and you all have, you're aware of that and...
Yes.
Okay. And that's, that's something else that's just going to happen, as I understand it. Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Duncan, one, one thing, you know, you talked about having a conversation. You know, we absolutely have talked about the need to have a nuanced conversation about tree canopy and residential requirements. So, absolutely.
All right. Mr. Lichtenhouse has a comment and Ms. Hardy has a comment and Ms. Vice Mayor Connolly has one.
Thanks, Dennis. So, just a couple more detailed questions because you're right, we've had these conversations. As a matter of fact, I remember when I was elected, you were the first person from board and commission to reach... and commission to reach out to me, to meet. And that conversation stuck with me for, for a number of reasons, but I know you're passionate about it. I am curious to know, just on a couple of the bullet points, the first about the protection of the mature trees and the residential and non-residential. I mean, right here, right now, based on the numerous conversations, which I know that you've had in reaching out to council and others, is, is there something prescriptive that you would recommend? Not just necessarily tree canopy, but if there were requirements that we had to change to preserve the greening of the city in residential and non-residential, is there a percentage you would put out there? I mean, we talked specifically about mature tree canopy at the George Mason site, and I believe that they've agreed to 20%. Is there something that the Tree Commission, Urban Forestry otherwise, would recommend as it relates to new development?
So actually, for the high school site, they have, currently, they show more than what we had asked for. So we're not going to quibble about that.
Sure.
In terms of the first part of your question, I don't think we have anything prescriptive right now. I think, as we suggested, I think having a more nuanced discussion where we can tease out the kinds of things that could be done will be useful.
Okay. I'd be interested in having that conversation. I mean, I, I ultimately decided to run because of my expertise and focus on the commercial and economic development, but over the last year, for a number of reasons, I don't know, maybe I'm getting older, it's the kids, I don't know. But the preserve, the preservation of green space in the city is something that's become important to me personally. We talked a little bit about a work session, about urban farming, about things beyond just mature trees. And I think there's a lot that we can do in the city. And it's not just from a residential and a non-residential development perspective, but, you know, I look at it from, from activating green space in the city and making it become a draw. To, to Mr. Duncan's point, to others, in some cases, you know, there is typically going to be a net loss of mature trees in certain types of developments, but I think that there's enough green space and green space opportunity throughout the city for us to improve that. But I think with smart planning and something a little more prescriptive, I think that we can do that. But again, I would urge, and I, when Kate was here, I guess it was last Monday, about the Urban Forestry name change and a number of other items. Again, the idea of going beyond just tree canopy in terms of the greening of the city is important. It's something that I'm passionate about, and as soon as we get over this hump related to some of the commercial and economic development, I want to make sure that we focus more on, on implementing some of those changes. So you have my, my full support in trying to find the right answer, the right solution, and the right mix for, for overall greening of Falls Church, because I think frankly, it's one of the most valuable things in the city. One of my favorite places is, is laying on the trampoline with my three daughters and linking up the tree canopy that we have in our own yard, right? So oak and hemlock and others. And it's just, it's amazing that you get that in a place like Falls Church, because in other places you don't. And you do look around at some of the large developments and understand that landscape and tree canopy changes. Generally speaking, I mean, at, at the end of the day, it's one of the things that actually brings you a bit of serenity and sanity, you know? When you step back out from my, the dense confines of Tyson's where I work, when I drive into the city, it's almost like this collective, just kind of this, this release of tension, right? Because of, of the inviting nature of Falls Church as a whole. But, but generally speaking, I, you know, I'm supporting what you guys are doing and would like to find that, that right balance.
All right, Ms. Hardy.
Thank you. I have three things, two quick and one longer. You didn't bring it up, Dennis, but I think last week when we talked about the Urban Forestry name change for the Tree Commission, I am supportive of that. So whenever staff wants to bring it forward, hopefully we can make that happen. Second, I wanted to confirm that I think Arbor Day celebrations this year is April 27th at 1 o'clock at Bourbon Park.
Correct.
So everyone can get that on their calendars, hopefully for good weather. Third, I don't want to belabor the point, but I did want to talk about the residential redevelopment. So we focus a lot about tree canopy and, you know, how to keep green infrastructure in commercial development. But I think I'd argue that we probably disturb way more land in the course of the city in residential redevelopment. And so to the extent we can have the discussion about, you know, whether we are exercising all the authority we have on preserving mature trees, whether it's through lot coverage or other means, I think it says a lot when I probably hear as many concerns I do day to day about flooding and stormwater issues as I do about traffic calming, because that's usually my top two things that I hear about from people when they show up to my office hours, either traffic calming, budget if it's springtime, and recently it's been stormwater issues. So I do think trees play a large role in that. And so I certainly would love to, you know, pile on to what Mr. Duncan said about residential redevelopment and making sure that we are maximizing kind of all the authority we have around this when residential redevelopment happens. So I'd love to see you guys take a leadership role in that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Connolly.
I also heard from Ms. Wright that you were a big hit in our second grade class, so thank you very much. And I hear there's going to be a tree planting at TJ with that same group of kids. So thank you for that support as well. Since we had a proclamation about local government, Education Week, that's a great way to teach kids about what local government is. So thank you very much.
All right. I've got a question or two, or comment or two, maybe both. One, I guess, is directed at the city attorney with respect to regulation of trees on residential lots. Could you just maybe discuss, if you're ready, a little bit about how you view the limitations of the city, or what we can do, maybe that we're not doing, or essentially just what law regulates, or state law regulates how we can regulate the trees within the city?
And I have to say, I'm not really fully prepared to answer that tonight.
Okay.
But I do think there are some ability, I mean, we certainly have some abilities under state law to protect trees, and we need to sort of look at those and see what we have today. And I will take a look and see if we can beef that up to some degree.
Okay, yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. It sounded like I did.
No.
So I guess I would just say, you know, that's an important topic, I think, for a lot of people in town. When you see houses get torn down and the whole lot get clear cut, I think it causes a lot of consternation around people, and maybe there'll be some more trees, but it'll be 30 years before they are the same size. So I guess if you could just spend a little bit of time considering ways that we might be able to regulate tree canopy and the like within the city, I think we would all be interested in hearing.
I will do that.
Okay. And then a thought or two in general, along the lines of some of the discussions we've had here previously. I know this 10 acres is going to result in a lot of, you know, not a lot, but some mature trees being lost, and probably not as many being put back in the place because of, you've got buildings going where there might have been some open space. I do think one thing we ought to be thinking more about is trying to push those trees throughout our community, you know? Either more street trees, or just like a program to take some of that money or resources we might get from a new development and try to push that out through the rest of our community. You know, whether that's some kind of voluntary concession where we use, we build up a fund for, you know, planting trees. I know you already do some of that, but making it more robust, try to push it out through the whole city. Just something that occurs to me, because there are sort of places, like right next to Metro Stop is not typically where you think the highest and best use of the land would be, open space and trees. No matter how much we like open space and trees, those things might be better served farther away from mass transit. But so anyway, that's just something I think maybe you guys could give some thought to. And then also, I would note that the Fellow's property is coming into the city's inventory, and that's two acres, so hopefully we can put some trees and, and make that a bit of oasis more than it would have been with seven houses on it. So I would just make that note as well. And in general, I'll just thank you for the good work you guys do. I know that sometimes it feels like an uphill battle, but we are trying to balance economic development and, and the good things that we want to see happen in the city with preserving the good things we already have. So we appreciate you fighting the good fight for, for trees and the like, so thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time and attention and good humor.
Yeah, all righty. Okay, so we are off. Thanks again to our next item on the agenda, which is council requests. Are there any council requests?
One quick question, the big poll that's lying on the ground on Hillwood Avenue, no, yeah, Hillwood Avenue is an indication that that signal is going up sometime pretty soon, I guess, I hope.
It is going up in the next two weeks, and we will need to do that work at night. We'll get work out to the public about that, but we'll have to shut down the whole intersection while that, while those spans go up. But we'll be glad to have that intersection back up. Now, as long as this has taken, this is a temporary fix, we will, in fact, put into the CIP a intersection plan that would enhance the ped crossings and things like that, but that's, that's a more expensive undertaking. This is really just to get that signal back up.
Okay, thank you. So that pole, which looks like a concrete industrial looking pole, is not a permanent pole. We're going to get the, you know, I don't know, fluted Carlisle style or something like that?
That is correct.
Okay. So that'll be more keeping with the standards of the city?
That's right.
This is just a short-term solution with a monster, super heavy concrete pole for temporary purposes?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Any other council requests, or should we move on to business on the agenda? All right, let's move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item for items?
Yes.
And I guess, let me just ask the city attorney, can we call and hear these together? Or by law, do we need to do these?
You can, you can have a hearing on them all together, but then you'll need to adopt each one individually.
All right. Why don't you call them all, then?
Certainly. We have TO 19-02, ordinance fixing and determining the budget of expenditures and revenues and appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2020, general fund, school operating funds, school community service fund, school food service fund, cable access fund, sewer fund, and stormwater fund. We have TO 19-03, ordinance fixing and determining the FY 2020 through FY 2025 capital improvements program budget and appropriating expenditure and revenue funds for the fiscal year 2020. And we have TO 19-04, ordinance setting the rate of tax levy on real estate for the tax year 2020 and on personal property machinery and tools and all other properties segregated by law for local taxation in the city of Falls Church, Virginia for tax year 2019.
All right, that's it, isn't it? Okay. Ms. Bowa?
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, and members of the council. We have a, a bridge version of the presentation, just to recap what we, the city manager's proposed budget is.
Before we have an abridged version of what the budget is going to be, the Vice Mayor and I are going to read, if you don't mind, a disclosure or statement that we want to read. So if you can indulge us for just a moment, again, sorry for the interruption. I make the following statement before city council's consideration of the FY 2020 budget items. My wife's an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2019 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly, fairly objectively and in the public interest.
I make the following statement before city council's consideration of the FY 2020 budget items. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2019 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right, sorry for the interruption.
No worries. So we have for you a bridge version of the presentation that was provided by the city manager on March 11th for the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget. And slide number two, based on the city council guidance that was provided in December 2018, the budget does not, provides an overview, the budget does not propose an increase in the real estate tax rate for both capital and operating. And also, both the general government and the school budgets are within the organic revenue growth projections that are proposed in the budget. Also, the budget proposes use of permit reserve to assist with increased permitting activity that is associated with major construction projects, and the anticipated use of capital reserve, that is one of the major elements of this budget, the use of capital reserve to address the increased debt service based on the financial plan that was presented during the high school bond referendum in 2017. The next slide provides an, an overview of the numbers of the operating budget. So the city manager's budget for fiscal year 20 is for $99.3 million. And with the general government budget increasing at 2.4% for almost $1 million, and the school transfers are augmented by a little over $1 million at 2.5%. The Womata subsidy has increased by $511,000, which includes the use of N VTA 30% funds and the amount of $111,000 and $400,000 in local revenue from the city towards the Womata subsidy increase. There is a significant increase in the debt service, and when, we'll see in one of the slides later, this is to address the school construction, library, and other major projects, the capital projects that the city has taken on recently. The service, debt service has grown from approximately 6% to 8% last year to roughly 14% in fiscal year 20 budget. So that is one of the bigger use of funding. Slide number four and five will provide a highlight, highlights of the fiscal year 20 budget, which include addition of two building inspector positions and increasing the hours of a fire safety inspector position to address the increased development activity in the city. These will be funded using the development permit reserve, which has a balance of $900,000 right now, currently, and will be increased, supplemented with the Founder's Rose fees that come later on towards the, in the current fiscal year. The budget also proposes addition of one police officer position, increasing the force to 33 uniform personnel as part of a multi-year plan to increase the staffing due to population growth in the city. The budget also increases, includes a total of $390,000 for eligible elderly, disabled, and veterans, which is $63,000 more than the current fiscal year budget, with a new policy that would go into effect for property tax relief that would go into effect in December. Budget addresses contract increases, including the Womata that we talked about, but also including Fairfax and Arlington County contracts that we have for health services and fire in Arlington, and other benefits contracts that we have with vendors. And finally, the budget proposes a 3.2% merit increase for employees and a 3% step increase for police sworn officers with a half a percent in cost of living adjustments, and restores the HR director position that was cut in fiscal year 18. Towards the, towards the facilities and park improvements, the budget includes $300,000 in pay-as-you-go funds for improvements in the facilities, $150,000 to implement park master plan, park trail improvements, and $150,000 for Fire Station 6 improvements, $90,000 dedicated per year hotel tax for beautification and programming for tree lighting, flower baskets, sidewalk sweeping, et cetera. 15.7 million grant funds for West Falls Church Economic Development Project for walkability and multimodal connectivity along Haycock Road and Route 7. Also includes 3.3 million grant application pending BDOT for South Washington Street project. And for neighborhood traffic calming, the budget includes a grant funds in the amount of $636,000. And the total CIP has over $2.3 million over the 10-year window for the neighborhood traffic calming program. The budget also includes $100,000 in operating funds for road and sidewalk pedestrians and commercial district spot improvements. It maintains $75,000 that we have for traffic signal maintenance and improvements. And finally, the budget also proposes $100,000 in new funding for transportation grant development in each year, in this year fiscal year 20. To address the city's taking on additional debt, so the existing debt right now is $55.2 million, and we're expected to grow to $196 million over the next few years as we implement the full CIP that was adopted by council in July of last year. And to address this, as I mentioned, the debt service has grown already. The dark green in the chart is the existing debt service for projects, and it is tapering off as we pay off our debt. The light green is the projects taken on by the city, the library, the city hall, and other miscellaneous projects. And the dark blue is the high school project, the George Mason High School project debt service. The current city policy is to, for debt service to be in between the 12% to 15% range of the total expenditures. This is the first year we're, we are still going to be within our 12%, no, within the 15%. So this is the first year we're going to cross the 12% range, and we are going to be as, following the new fiscal policies adopted by council February of last year. That requires us to keep our thresholds for the fund balances at a floor of 15% and a high of, target of 20%. And the city has positioned itself well to address the additional debt build and maintain strong capital reserves over the years, last few years, fully funded the pensions, as you are fully aware, and upgraded to triple AAA rating, which also attests to strong management and financial management by the city council and the staff. Finally, I'd like to bring everyone's attention to the budget schedule. We have two other, besides tonight, we have two other opportunities to, for city council to get direct feedback from residents on April 8th and 22nd. And they can provide feedback via website or email, also provided on the next slide. We are hoping that, and anticipating budget adoption on Monday, April 22nd. The packet has the three ordinances, the proposed budget with the highlights as just mentioned above, and tax rate with no increase to the current tax rate of 1.355, as we have, and CIP ordinances with the projects that were blessed by the planning commission. And I just handed out the responses to questions that were put forward, that were not answered and were brought forward by the council at the last meeting when the departments were here. We will have other responses as we get more questions, and we're not able to answer them on the spot. So with that, I conclude my presentation, and we welcome questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. I'm, so I don't forget about it, going to open this up to public comment before I move on. Do I need to do that for each particular item? Can I do that all at one?
You can do it for the three together.
All right, so before I move on, I'm going to ask if any member of the public wishes to speak to this, any of these three matters that have been called recently, the budget, the tax rate, and the CIP. Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public, so we're going to go ahead and move on to questions for you or other staff. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Bawa? Ms. Hardy?
I was wondering whether we have a status update on the Womata numbers, whether the ones you've shown are firm, or whether we've gotten any more clarity.
We had another set of meetings with them, and it seems like the net impact with the, they had some changes to their 2A allocations, Route 2A and NH 22 allocations, which impacts Arlington, Falls Church, and Alexandria. Our net increase, and there was some other readjustments they did, so our net increase is about 5,000 there. And if the legislative exclusions are adopted, that will be another 25,000. So we will know more when they adopt in the next week and a half, but roughly, it seems like it's going to be in a zone which is going to be manageable that we can tap into.
Are there any other unknowns out there that we're still waiting on, or is everything going to be pretty solid? Unknown, unknowns.
So far, I think we have the numbers that were provided, like we got the numbers for the benefits, we got the Womata numbers. Of course, the Womata number has evolved, so it will be formed when they adopt completely. However, the, they had a CFO's meeting, and they discussed the numbers that they're presenting to their board. And we saw the version that's going in front of their board for adoption, so hopefully, these numbers are not going to change a whole lot, but.
All right, other comments, questions? You know, the contentious budget here and here. Vice McConnell?
Thank you for these responses to questions, and I have a question about the response. The city street policy, closing policy for special events. I don't see any num, cost attached to that. Is there a, like, what's the estimated cost to the city of doing this? I think Chief Gavin said it was more personnel time and being able to get people to cover it.
Oh, I, I thought maybe they misunderstood as a process more than.
The process is important, but also, we just need to know how much it costs to do these kind of things, so that, that when we budget, we know how much needs to go into the budget to do them, or, or what the effect is on the city when citizens come up with an idea like this.
Okay, well, we'll provide a cost.
Yeah, and maybe a way to look at it is just how many hours of labor it takes.
Yeah, yeah, hours of labor is a.
It probably wouldn't be a new cost, because these are all, the people who are doing this work are people who are already employed for the city. It's just, unless it's special overtime cost. But, so, point well taken, and we'll get back with you on that.
Right, it's the hours that they miss regular work.
Right, the hours they miss regular work.
And, and then any additional overtime costs, because they're closing South Washington Street
for however the amount of time that that would be, that would be overtime. We'd have to bring in more officers to be able to do that.
Okay, we'll provide that.
Okay. And then another question is just about the, the personal property tax and the car decals. Are we doing away with car decals this year?
So the, the treasurer and the commissioner are, have been talking about this as a policy. What the, the intent is, is actually to get to a permanent sticker for vehicles. There is value, I think we would submit that, to having the decal for city cars. We have a lot of parking regulations rely on that, and it is license tag readers aside, it is very helpful for enforcement. But it'd be a one-time deal. Once you get your car, you get the sticker, and that would be it. So it would be easier on our citizens, and ultimately, we would save some money from printing the stickers. But that would be the intention. Now, this is a policy discussion that some other council members have asked about, and have asked, does the council get to weigh in on this decision? And ultimately, I think that decal is in the city code. I'm speaking a little bit off the cuff on that, so ultimately, this is a question that would need to come to council. It does not have an immediate budget impact, however, because we would have one more round of the sticker if we went with that approach.
If we went to sticker contests, it'd be for life, so.
Just wanted to note on that point, I think the City of Alexandria had done away with it just recently, and so we'd be probably one of the few remaining jurisdictions, whether we have an annual one or a permanent one to have one.
All right, other questions, comments? Ms. Elickton House, did she have something?
Just a couple further to that point, sorry. Allergies just decided to plow through me in the last 30 minutes. It's not that I'm choked up over the budget.
Getting choked up about the tax rate?
It's just, yeah, it's such a, it's such a beautiful budget, I'm having a difficult time keeping it together right now here. Man, don't give up on Flonase after a week, that's all I got to say. Further to the point about the road closures, because Ed Anderson asked me about this right before we started council meeting. He had a question about closing the road for the MLK march. I know that that's come up before. I understand that if it's a major artery, that request has got to go through F D O T. It's probably like five different layers of approval there, $100 permit. Obviously, takes staff and resource time. General question, given the budget that we have, if and when that request does come up again, is that something we'll be able to address? Consider?
Well, the, the difficulty is not so much of a, like a, okay, one-shot deal, this is what it costs. The difficulty is, is having this, the amount of staff you need to man, you know, the, the road closures and the detours. And we're just not staffed that way. That's, that's kind of the intractable problem with it.
Is there an, conceivably, is there another route that could be used where we could accommodate that? When we close city streets for a lot of different things?
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a kind of a structural problem of, you know, our police officers, just as an example, are typically working six-day weeks. And so, when you call them in for that extra day to do work, a special event, that means they'll go two weeks without a day off. And you, you stack them up, then people get pretty grumpy. So the, really, the only way to, I don't, that's the structural problem, which we haven't figured out how to get around.
Is it conceivable with enough planning that it could be accommodated in some form or fashion?
Yeah, I mean, like, we, we make plans so that Memorial Day goes off and Watch Day goes off. It's, when you add them, you know, we're built so we can do those. But even the, the small things like the races, you know, people want to have a, a race, a 5K in the city. That's really difficult for us to staff, given the overtime, just giving the number of hours that we already ask our public safety personnel to work. So you, you would have to grow the department to solve that structural problem, or figure out a different way of doing it. We're closing the primary highways, though, the, the police department does have a view that these are important public safety events, and sort of ceding control to other groups is something that they don't feel comfortable doing, because ultimately, we are responsible for the safety of the people who come to our events.
Okay. So is that a no?
That, that has been the answer, is, it's just, it's not possible. The desire is there, and we try to say yes in everything we can, but those have been structurally difficult for us to, to deal with.
Even with adding an additional police officer in this budget?
Correct. So we do, we ask for, for the ones that we have right now, like the run for the schools, they pay for the overtime. So it's almost, it's not a, it's not a dollar problem, it is a hours of the day problem, if that makes sense.
It, it does and it doesn't, so I get it's a dollar problem. Well, it's not a dollar problem, it's a resource problem. So how do we balance that, given the resources that we have? So if we have, say it's not even MLK, say it's other events that would like for some special consideration for road closure. Is it at all points going forward for any new event that requires a road closure, we just say, no, we can't do it?
That, that generally has been our approach. And so, it, you know, it became an acute problem of morale in the department, just to be frank. And so, I had a, an agreement with the chief, I'm going to back you up. We cannot say yes to everybody who comes in and wants to do an event in the city. And that, and I have backed her up, and that's been the way we've had to run it. The, so to, to do it, you know, is there a business model out there where we say, okay, we're just going to do this every weekend, and we're going to make so much money off of it, we're going to hire 10 new officers? And those numbers don't really add up, you know, as a business model. It doesn't, it doesn't pencil out, if you follow me.
Yep. What about, not to belabor the point, but I will. Road closures on side streets? I mean, are there other areas where it may require limited law enforcement resources?
Yes, so we do those as a matter of course, all the block parties. You fill out a form, there's no fee.
Yeah, I've done that.
DPW drops off the barricades, we notify dispatch. Easy, no fuss, no muss. It's the big roads that are, that are the issue, where you're sort of shutting down a big chunk of the grid.
So, last question. How many additional resources would it require for Falls Church to be able to accommodate additional special events like that?
All right, let me get back with you on that.
All right. The tax deferral, or I'm sorry, the, the tax relief program. At one point, we had a conversation last year related to tax relief, tax abatement for property tax purposes, and there was a fairly spirited conversation during work session around tax deferrals. Someone refresh my memory on where we, where we left that?
Well, could, so we plan to have a work session discussion on April 1 with Jody here to walk through it. Could we defer that question until that work session?
No pun intended.
Otherwise, I will say things that are not correct.
That's great. Now, I think it's important that we try to solve that problem. I think simple abatements and, and relief is not going to solve the problem for us, and we've got to come up with something that's a more diverse, acceptable solution, as opposed to simply abating. And then, one final question. For neighborhood traffic calming, given the additional amounts that we've requested, and maybe it's my naivety in terms of how we address neighborhood traffic calming, I know that it comes through requests. Have we put a dollar amount on how much money it would take to solve all of the requests that are in the queue, right? So speed tables, the, the long list of, of things that come through for people requesting a neighborhood traffic calming?
Well, the queue that we have right now, I don't recall it right off the top of my head, but the last report, the last time the CACT was here, I think we walked through what that queue is. I think with the funding that we have and the grant money, we're going to really make significant progress.
Okay, that's good, that's great.
3 million over 10 years.
Yeah, okay.
600 of that thousand.
I didn't know if that had grown to the point where we're saying, well, we can address, you know, 50% of it, but this is all we can do this year, so that's good to know. Okay, all right, thanks, guys.
All right.
Are we talking about all things on block? I mean, is the CIP question okay? Okay. Sunday at the forum, the question rose again about the turf practice field, and that's a havesies, as I understand it. I've never heard a definitive, yes, we are going to light the ball fields. But the schools say they're putting their half in, and we're putting our half in. What's the status?
The, the project is in the fiscal year 21 for an estimated cost of 400,000 with a 50-50 split between the school and the city. Both parties are committing.
Okay, so that's the plan.
That's how it's placed, the time wise is fiscal year 21.
Right, it doesn't need to happen this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year anyway, okay.
Correct, the timeline was coordinated between R. Rexon Park and the schools and the school project for FY 21.
Okay. Could I file an ask then, since it's not of this year, that we, this also came up at the Sunday session, the baseball field issues? I mean, right now, I think we all understand that the baseball field is being segregated away from anything having to do with the school improvement project. And I understand that cost dictates that right now, but we're talking a year from now, things might look different. I would just ask us to have a staff level, bi-cameral, school board and city council, discussion about whether we might view the baseball field in the same way that we view the multipurpose field and the stadium field and so forth, which is, as a community, potential community asset. Because if that field were improved, and certainly if it were artificially turfed, it could become a venue for much broader regional use and potential income and potential, you know, customers to the development that we're putting up in the Gateway Project. And I know right now, everybody's got so much on their plate that, that it's like, oh my God, my head explodes when you start talking about this. But, you know, we need to think about it and not end up, you know, three years from now with a great-looking school and all other fields and a dumpy old baseball field that we could have improved at more modest cost when, you know, the earth movers were there and the fencers were there, and, you know, things could have been done that, if we'd just planned ahead, we could, we could make them happen. So that's a, a request. I understand that some short-term measures were taken to solve or address immediate drainage problems they have on the baseball field for the right here and right now. But I'm talking about a longer-term, more holistic way to look at that, so that essentially, the baseball field will serve the same function that softball field. The new softball field's going to be great. I'm sure it'll be rentable to, you know, softball teams at all age levels and so forth. So that's just an ask. And finally, I'm not going to get all weepy, because I don't have allergies yet, but I just, this is the seventh budget that I've worked on, which is not a big number compared to Mr. Z, of course, because he must be in double digits by now. But this, this is a budget that really reflects many years of difficult, and sometimes tense, negotiations and compromises to get us to the point where we are today, which is, you know, don't need to go through the details, but an ability to address some of our compensation needs on both school and city side, which is an important priority that we've not always been able to do, as well as our facilities' needs across, you know, a whole spectrum of things, from the fellow's property, as the mayor indicated, to the parks and, you know, expenses on the city side that, that we've had to defer in leaner times, in addition to, of course, city hall and the high school and Mount Daniel and all the things that, that we've brought online in the, in just the last couple of years. And that will come back online, new things will come online in the next, you know, three or four years. So that's just by way of saying thank you to everybody, staff and former council members, and certainly the current leadership of our council. And also, I see the vice chair of the school board is here with us. I think of him as sort of the eighth council member, because he's such a faithful attendee at our meetings. And I, that, I think that's made a difference. I think that, that, you know, he gives his colleagues an abbreviated version of all the things that he hears us talk at great length about, and I think that's helped in promoting understanding and, and a cooperative relationship between the two bodies. So I just personally would like to thank everyone who has been involved in the budget processes since 2013 for all that they have done to get us where we are today, because we're today at a very good place to launch into some very important initiatives that will really set Falls Church up to be a, a great city for another 75 years into the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Connolly had something. I don't know if you want to go ahead and let Mr. Z go. Go ahead, Mr. Z. It's your birthday, it's a birthday present for me.
This is a very good budget, and it's, the, the remark on the lack of contention is, is because we've all worked very diligently and worked very hard to make this a largely drama-free budget. We asked for a drama-free budget just because there are so many things before us and, and and to be able to take on those issues at the same time, advance with progress and. be able to take on those issues at the same time advance with progress and things like acquisition of open space, provide tax relief for seniors, able to accommodate the incredibly monstrous, well, modest subsidy, and to ensure that we have a workforce on both the city and school side that befits our city. Having said that, I would also urge enough caution that if you follow the markets, that you notice that the yield has inverted, long-term yield has inverted, you know, it's been trending that way for a while, and it's finally gone there, and that has presaged the last nine recessions and the average time between the yield and inversion. And the next recession is 16 to 18 months, so let's be mindful that regardless of what our current president says is forecast for sunny skies, blue skies and sunny days ahead of us, that we may be facing a period of severe budget restraint. So, I would ask my colleagues here that let's continue to have drama-free budgets, work with the school board and achieve that, and be mindful that we need to be prepared just in case when we take on nearly $200 million of debt, that this period of blue skies may not last forever. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly.
I just wanna ask some questions about Mr. Bierke's request, because it seems like it's out of the process. Was it part of the original budget request?
It's part of the $2.8 million of unfunded, of unmet needs.
One of the unfunded things, okay. So it's one of many unfunded things that we haven't been able to fund. Were there other personnel requests that we weren't able to fund as well?
There are many, from various departments, yes.
Okay.
In fact, most departments feel they haven't recovered their personnel numbers to the pre-recession FD count in many of the departments.
Right. So if we heard from every department director, they would have the same impassioned request for additional staff as well? And there's, and then my other question is, is there a way to split it and say, well, instead of a full-time person or a part-time person, we do a three-quarter time person? I don't know where the money would come from for that. But again, in trying to balance all of it, how do we balance one department staffing needs against another department staffing needs? It's tricky, because you wanna make sure you're doing it right and evenly. So, I'm just putting that out there as a general question, and I know that when you are putting the budget together, you're balancing a lot of those things. I don't know if there's an answer to that, just something else for us all to mull over as we think about how that would work.
All right, Ms. Hardy.
So I have the same question as well, about the registrar's request. I understood it's kind of on the list of all the other unfunded needs, and I don't know, is there a prioritized list in the budget? Or is it just kind of a master list of everything that? If I can make a few requests for the upcoming work session, because I understand we have one on April 1 with the schools, DPW, et cetera. So on the schools, to echo Mr. Z's point, I don't think we're gonna have it this good every year. And so I think in next year's budget, I don't think we're gonna account on, for example, on the school's budget, the office lease savings, lower school enrollment costs, and of course, in the city, higher property values help make it all work. And so I'd wanna make sure that the savings we were able to find this year in the school budget and actually in the general government as well, if they're sustainable or what we can expect in the out years, because I think that's clearly gonna be pressure, I think, in future years. With HHS, I think one of the things I mentioned early on, well, I'm largely happy with where we are with the budget, is a more comprehensive kind of investment in affordable housing. I think I've talked about how that seems to be a big component that's missing. So whether that's investing in saving the fields, which expires in seven years, the missing middle housing that we talked about when we looked at our demographics report, workforce housing, whether we need to look more comprehensively at new revenue sources, this may not be a FY '20 budget discussion, but I think it's important to start it now, because it's not a one-year kind of thing and obviously takes time to get there. On DPW, I mentioned that the first time we talked about it around trash and recycling. So I know that with the current state of recycling, our costs are going up. And I think in other jurisdictions, the way they're combating that issue is by raising the recycling fee for residents. I don't think we're proposing doing that this year, but if that's a trend that we need to be aware of, I'd like a little more discussion on that.
Yeah, we plan to bring that on April 1, because we have Department of Public Works gonna be there.
Yep. Stormwater, which we talked about a bit earlier, like I said, it's one of the top citizen concerns I hear these days about stormwater, and I know we have a dedicated fund for stormwater requests. And I know that we have also a long queue of projects that uses that stormwater fund. So similar to the requests we get for traffic calming, there's never enough money to do all of it. But my question really that hopefully we could talk about on April 1 is, do we have enough money and resources against it, especially in light of the fact that we have more of these, you know, 50-year, 100-year kind of flooding events now across the city? And then, of course, traffic calming. Based on the questions and answers, thank you for that, by the way, it sounds like with the new money we have, and I think the data in here that staff costs, the soft costs are only 13% of the total costs, that we should be able, hopefully, use the $2 million in grant money and not need a second Jeff Sykes? If I'm understanding that correctly? But I'd love to have more discussion of that, because I think to Mr. Lickenhouse's question, I'd love to get through that queue. So now that we have that grant money, if we can get through that queue before more things get added to the queue, that's certainly good news for citizens. I have a sense, though, that we're gonna get, we're gonna keep getting more requests. There's just gonna be more traffic in the neighborhoods, so I wanna make sure that we are funding that appropriately. And then finally, on DPW, I'm glad this year that we're doing a lot of the spot improvement work that have money dedicated, but this council in particular has been really passionate about just walkability. And now that we have money against it, I'd love for us to have just a more comprehensive kind of pedestrian safety walkability plan. So whether that's an agenda that, instead of the piecemeal kind of every time we bug Wyatt about, hey, this street needs work or this crosswalk needs work, can we take a comprehensive look across the city to think about where there are sidewalk missing links, whether we need pedestrian signal upgrades, refreshing crosswalks, but really take it seriously? And let's make sure that we have budget, not just this year, but also future years to maintain and make progress in that area. So those are my requests for the next work session. Just a couple of quick comments on at least where we are tonight. I think I haven't been able to say this the past three budget cycles, but like everyone else, I'm really happy with where we are, both in terms of investing in the future, preparing for it, and so kudos to city staff and my colleagues and past colleagues in kind of making this an investment. I think I'm really happy that we're not only investing in a lot of areas that we care about, but investing in our people. So with pay and general government and schools, having comparable pay increases is important, increasing our police, preparing for the development with extra inspectors, doing tax relief, all great investments, as well as both the process. I think the process, by and large, like everyone said, has been way more pleasant than when we've been able to do it in the past years and with no tax increase. But again, I don't think that we're gonna be this lucky in future years, so I think we'll, we need to have a discussion on what future years looks like and have our eye towards that. One of my top concerns before starting the budget process was making sure that we both maintain and follow through on all the new stuff we're building. So we talked about parks last week, parking enforcement with police and making sure that we uphold all the new parking restriction programs that we are providing residents in both neighborhoods and commercial. I think I looked at both the police chief and the director of Wreckin' Parks and I and asked him, do you have all the resources to do this? And I think I heard, got head nods from both of them. So hopefully, my expectation and hope is that means that with this increase in investment that we will maintain and see good progress in those areas. But overall, I think I've been very happy with where we are with this budget, so thank you all for making it happen.
All right, thank you. I don't know if you have anything, Mr. Snyder. I know you walked in early. We did announce that you were late due to work commitments, but did you have anything you wanted to add? To wrap up the conversation?
No, I think this budget does what local governments ought to do. I think we're paying attention to infrastructure, we're paying attention to public safety, we're being mindful of the tax rate, we're trying to stay competitive with other jurisdictions in our area, we're supporting our excellent school system. And I've been around when things have gotten worse, and they can get worse, and I wanna echo Councilmember Hardy's question a minute ago. I don't wanna sign off on this budget if I know that the next two budgets are gonna be a lot worse, because we're doing something in this budget. So, I want some sort of a discussion about the longer term before, over the course of this, over the course of this budget discussion, but this one certainly looks like we're doing what we were put here to do. Thank you.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, I'll just wrap up with a couple of brief comments. I would like to echo the, I don't know if compliment's the right word, but just the unprecedented cooperation with the schools over these past months with respect to the high school, the 10 acres of economic development, this budget cycle and the like. I think it's been very productive for the entire city. And I do think we're laying the groundwork for some great things ahead, and we're making some investments in our community and our future that I think are gonna pay dividends for years to come. So, I'm excited about this year and the things we're on the cusp of, doing some really, I think, exciting things for our city. So, with that, do we have a motion regarding these three items here?
Could I make one more comment?
Yes.
About the elections board? This is a very critical issue, and it's not being ignored what the request is. It's on the sidetrack right now, but it's not being ignored, and depending on how things go, it may come back up again. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. It's there, we understand the importance. Would sure be nice if the state did more of the job financially. So, anyway, just wanted to make that point.
All right, do we have a motion? Motions? Anyone?
Well, are we starting with O2?
Yes.
Move the grant first reading to TO19-02. Schedule public hearings for April 8th and April 22nd, 2019. Schedule second reading for April 22nd, 2019, and advertise the same according to law.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. We have another one? Another motion?
This is on the CIP. Move the grant first reading to TO19-03. Schedule public hearings for April 8th and April 22nd. Schedule second reading for April 22nd, 2018, and advertise the same according to law.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Duncan?
And this sets the tax rate. Move the grant first reading TO19-04. Schedule public hearings for April 8th and April 22nd. Schedule second reading for April 22nd, 2019, and advertise the same according to law.
Do we have a second? All right, the motion fails.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you. Madam Clerk, you wanna call the next item?
Certainly. We have TR19-12, Resilution Authorizing the City Manager to Extend a Lease Agreement with Jefferson 450 LLC for a period not to exceed 45 days for municipal use at 450 West Broad Street for a cost not to exceed $2,039.
Mr. Shields?
Our council, this item is similar to the one that the council approved last week. This is a lease to extend for our detective corps, and the cost, as noted, is $2,039.
And you just forgot to do this in the last bunch?
Correct.
All right. Any member of the public wish to address this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Any comments, counsel, or questions from council? If not, do we have a motion?
Move TO19-12.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there any member of council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay. If not, Mr. Shields, do you personally say anything about this? There's not much to say.
I believe we just have appointments, is that correct?
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion?
Move the items on consent counter.
All right, do we have a second? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, let's go on to other business.
We have authorized the additional expenditure of up to $325,000 under an existing contract with LV Comsec Inc. for the City Hall Public Space and Safety Improvements Project.
Mr. Shields?
Mayor and members of council, this is related to the City Hall Public Space and Safety Improvements Project. What is requested is that the council approved a contract at the beginning of the project in April 2018 in the amount of $450,000 to do all the configuration of the low-voltage systems in City Hall. This change order is related to items that were either left out of the original plans for the City Hall or for items that we've asked to be, you know, in reviewing our plans, we've asked for change orders. And discussing, sort of working out the best way to get this work done, to have these, generally, it's work of installing conduit and junction boxes, pulling cable, installing card readers and TV cameras for security, as well as low voltage for the fire panel and code compliance. There were, essentially what this is, is omissions in the plans, and we're now asking the council for approval to have LV Comsec do this work, as opposed to HIT Construction in the interest of speed. For this work, I will state that administratively, in order not to cause delays to the problem, which would increase liabilities to the city, staff did give administrative approval for this work, and a lot of this work is already substantially complete. And so, regrettably, we're coming to council effectively after the fact for this contract approval. So in total, the change orders are $295,000. We're asking for a 10% contingency, hence the total request of a contract authorization for $325,000. With respect to the overall project, obviously, we are behind schedule. We do plan to move in in late April. There are costs associated with those delays, and we're working out with HIT what those costs ultimately will be. This work, however, is outside of the HIT contract, which, in order to keep the project not having any extra delays, it would be, you know, attributable directly to the city for failure to make a decision on this work, this part of it has proceeded. Be happy to answer any questions on this. We also have Michael Whitfield, our head of Public Works, who is here to answer any questions on this as well.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Shields or Mr. Whitfield? Mr. Lickenhouse, then Ms. Hardy?
She had her hand up first, you wanna go? I can, okay. So, this is something that HIT is not handling, it wasn't in the scope of the project? Is that correct?
Correct.
Why, I guess, why wasn't it in the scope of the project? I guess, explain to me what it is. You mentioned low voltage. I don't understand.
Okay. So, in the plans, so there's sort of two components, two major components to it. One component of it is work that we had believed were in the plans, they were in an original set of the plans, and then were value-engineered out. But these are conduits behind walls, this is, you know, it's kind of very, they're important details, but they're details, and we did not, we became aware that they were taken out of the plans late in the process. So that is one significant component of it. The remainder of it are omissions from the plans that, as we're going through construction, are needed if we're going to have the systems in the building work as intended. going to have the systems in the building work as intended.
Okay. So I guess my question, I mean, so they value engineered out the low voltage conduits. I mean, was that HIT's decision if we came back and asked them to reduce costs? That just seems like something that would be general kind of base building requirement that would be incredibly difficult for us to make the decision to remove those. I don't, I just don't understand that.
Mr. Whitfield, welcome. What say you?
Mike, looks like he's got an answer. Maybe I can shed a little light. This was originally included in the plans. Right after GMP, it was revised and removed, and we do not know who did it and why it was done. It was called value engineering, but the project is a safety improvement project, so you cannot get rid of the security. But we are digging through documentation right now, and so we are coming to you and asking you to fund this, and the only reason is because we are not sure at this point who is supposed to be paying for this. And this is something, like Mr. Shields said, that we do have to work out. So it's very difficult for us to determine right now without having all the proper documentation. And we have, so far, we have not found the documentation stating, please remove this from the contract, other than there is a plan revision right after the GMP. We don't know whose request, if it was the architect, if it was the contractor, or if it was the owner, ourselves.
So I'll just say, I have a lot of heartburn over approving that if we don't know if we're going to recoup that money and rather, I understand the delays, and I feel like we're up against a wall as it is, but, I mean, $325,000 for something that should have been, I mean, if I'm a contractor, it's common sense if I understand if I'm building a public safety or public improvement project that you'd have to check the box on that. And I'm personally just uncomfortable with approving $325,000. And again, I understand the timing of it without knowing whether or not we're going to recover this or if we're simply throwing money down to execute on what should be almost a prerequisite for construction in this project, not knowing whether we're going to recoup that money or not. I mean, it seems to me, and I get that you have to go through documentation, it was value engineered and moved out, but it seems to me that that's a very simple conversation, is that if you're a licensed contractor and you're going through this, or if you're a licensed architect and you're designing this building, somebody would have to check the box on that to say, hey, guys, just a heads up, but we've got low voltage conduits and a number of other things that should be absolutely necessary that were just simply dropped, and now somebody's bringing that to our attention at the 11th hour. I just personally am very uncomfortable with that.
And it has complicated the process. The reason being is a lot of the building was already constructed.
Yeah.
And we had to go back and deconstruct in order to get some of these components in.
Okay.
Ms. Hardy?
So I guess after some really easy 7-0 votes, I'm also just going to rain on this parade a bit. So like Mr. Lickenhouse, I guess I'm just pretty unhappy about this. And I know in the staff report, we've outlined that we'll eventually have the full kind of total costs of the City Hall project, but where are we to date with what's known? So between the two lease extensions we already done because of the project being delayed, this extra 325 and maybe a few other things, where are we with the project as a whole?
Final completion?
The cost, yeah. At least what's known so far. There may still be some bogies out there, but...
Oh, the potential change orders that are out there?
Or at least, it sounds like we've had two lease extensions plus this 325. What else? Like, have we, I've lost track, I guess, is probably...
We have a list of potential change orders, which we have been going through for the last three months, and this is accrued over the entire project duration. And so to date, they list everything, they being HIT, list everything as a potential change order. So anytime there's something that they think is not out in their contract, if it's outside their contract, they list it as a PCO. And they've listed now for six months, a million dollars, saying it's not part of our original scope of work or in the GMP. So a majority of that, what we do is we assign that to one bucket or another. One of those buckets is the C-MAR contingency and one is the owner contingency. So the C-MAR contingency comes out of whatever they had in their GMP. The at-risk part is when they spend all that money. We're at that point right now, which is why we're getting quite a bit of pushback from them.
Got it. And so I know that in order to move into the building, clearly, we need this done, like, there's no choice, and to keep it on track. So we probably don't have a great solution for this, but I also would just express my dissatisfaction with the use of operating dollars. So we've talked about it before. I think it's great that we have underspending in FY19 budget, but I do feel like we are, in a sense, robbing Peter to pay Paul. So we're taking operating dollars to plug clearly a big issue in our capital project, right? And while we may be transparent with citizens about the total overruns on this, I think I just have concerns with ultimately where we're going to pay for it, and it'll probably be a budget amendment that we'll have upcoming. But overall, I think we'll probably hear from all of us, is no one's happy about having to approve 325. There probably may not be great options. On the question, though, about, we're still trying to figure out who asked that this stuff be removed. Was there still a city sign-off of the plans that had the version with it removed? So are they essentially, is it still our accountability that we signed off on something that had big components missing?
We have not found that document. So obviously, our previous project manager's not here, and we cannot find any documentation. The only thing we have is a revised plan, and we don't know why it was revised.
And I guess the last thing I would say is, given that we are about to undertake even more capital projects, hopefully clear lessons learned for us on both the amount of contingency we need, the C-MAR process potentially, I don't know if that's a cause or root cause of this, as well as just the details around how to run this project. Hopefully, we're taking away good lessons learned for future projects, because it worries me that we're taking on much more expensive projects and bigger projects than just City Hall.
Yes.
Other comments? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm not willing to invest the emotion into this to be angry, upset, disappointed. I mean, we are where we are, and, you know, it takes a lot of talent to try to build an airplane while you fly it, or in this case, try to build a City Hall while you're trying to move back into it. And so this is now the critical path portion of getting back in, and I can certainly appreciate that you don't have the time or the bandwidth at this point to determine liability. Of course, that will come much later. We'll be spending legal fees to do that. So there's money on top. But I do notice here that you've asked for 325K, which includes a 10% contingency. And having been here before, both in the role of trying to finish mission-critical projects as well as CIO of a major company, you're vastly under in contingency. I propose that we amend this additional expenditure to up to $350,000, which gives you almost 20% contingency, because I think you're going to need every penny of it. And I don't want you coming back for another 25K late in the game. Thank you.
All right. Other comments? Mr. Lickenhouse?
So if we were already in debate with HIT over a number of items related to this project, why wouldn't we just commission them to do this work, and that just gets thrown into the larger argument as opposed to going and contracting a third party to do this, which is going to make it even more difficult for us to resolve the who owes who what money?
They have virtually refused to do the work.
I'm sorry, they refused. They just said, we're not doing it.
Which is one reason we're having to pay extra for this one contractor, which is our contractor. Our contractor was only to pull wire, not to install conduit and J-boxes. We've been working with the city attorney on this for quite some...
Actually, Mr. Lickenhouse, we could force them to do it, but what would be the point? I mean, we've, we've, we've said we're going to do this, and we've taken out of the contract. It would be a constructive change of contract at this point, which completely opens the floodgates for an even larger lawsuit that I envision us having to deal with after the construction's complete.
Other comments?
I get it. It's just that this is the first that I'm hearing about this, and I understand the disagreements that we've had. But again, I'm just uncomfortable with signing a new contract to a third party on top of the disagreements that we're already having with them. I haven't been involved enough in this most recent decision and debate as to how we're going to solve this particular problem to expedite. So just raising a general level of frustration, which I'm sure is shared by everyone on staff as well.
Other comments? Mr. Snyder?
First, a question. What's the total cost of this project now, assuming that this is approved? How does that compare to what we originally approved?
The life of the project?
Yeah, the overall project now.
I believe it's somewhere around $18 million.
$18 million? And we approved how much?
That was the total. So this is ongoing 10 years?
FY12 was the first allocation of funding, and the total allocation is $17,650,000. The dollar amount above that, I think, is what Mr. Whitfield is talking about that we're still working through, whether it's C-MAR contingency or owner contingency.
So potentially, could it be $20 million? Yes.
So potentially, we've gone up from $17,650 to $20 million? Is that, yeah?
Be determined.
Okay. Not good. So let me turn to the city attorney. What happens next? Let's say we approve this. What, is there an arbitration provision in there, or do we litigate over it, or what are we going to do? In other words, if we say, okay, we got to get this done, as Councilmember Z says, but Councilmember Lickenhouse raises very good issues. So as a matter of law, what are our options to argue over and dispute the, these overages?
Well, I think that there's not an arbitration provision in the contract. We would normally not, we would proceed to litigation if that were necessary. We are continuing to debate these issues with the contractor to try to work through them and finish up the analysis, which is not, you know, not completely finished. But, so, it's not clear that we wouldn't be able to get some solution, but we have not, as Mr. Whitfield has pointed out, there are some, you know, documents that we're trying to sort through the history of the documentation on the project. So we are continuing to work on that. We have an outside attorney who specializes in construction work and has been helping us with this.
So you used a double negative at least, a couple times, you used a double negative. Did I use a double negative just now? Anyway, so I guess my question is, if we approve this tonight, are we going to dispute and use our maximum legal rights to be able to get back what we have a right to get back?
Yes, we will. I will say that because we haven't gotten through all the analysis or all the documentation at this point, it is not perfectly clear at this point exactly where all those rights stand. But we are working on that, and we have been arguing over all the issues that have come up, and we will defend our position as, to the extent it's justifiable, based on all the documents and all the analysis when we have it.
So what you're saying is you can't promise an outcome, but you promise a very robust, rigorous legal position?
That's correct. And we have already been taking a strong position with the contractor in trying to fight about change orders and argue over all these issues that have begun coming up on the project.
Thank you.
All right. Other comments? Does any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any other comments from council? Do we have a motion? Do we need a motion?
We're move to authorize the additional expenditure of up to $350,000 under an existing contract with LV Comsec Inc. for the City Hall Public Safety, Public Space and Safety Improvements Project.
Second. All right. Mr. Shields, would you comment on the increased amount from 325 to 350?
Well, I will say that because this work is largely complete, the, I think we do have a good handle on these costs. Mr. Whitfield, would you care to comment on that as well? I mean, I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Z, and I appreciate it. But I think in this case, because of the, of the timing, these costs are known to a pretty full extent.
They are known costs. We think we're going to be finished with this work by this week. So we have a very good handle on the cost itself.
With all due respect, having done this before, finishing the work is just really the beginning of it. You're going to have all kinds of redo, connections that didn't have the right impedance, connections that missed, all kinds of things. Have you tested the system?
No, it's not been tested.
Can I stand by my offer? I'm not saying spend all of it.
Yes.
I'm giving you an extra 20K just in case you're wrong.
Mary Beth, or Vice Mary Conley?
Where would that extra $25,000 come from? Do we have another $25,000 in operating that we could put into that?
So we are planning to cover through underspending in three areas. The IT budget, the jail services costs, and the building facility maintenance. Now, we're going to be dipping into that money to pay for other issues associated with this contract as well. So that will come in the, sort of the full budget reconciliation for this project, which will be happening once we have greater clarity on how these issues are going to be resolved. So with the additional funding that has been offered, it would come from that same source of underspending, and that would need to be taken care of later in the budget amendment that's referenced in the staff report.
If we were to authorize this, could you come to us before you actually spend it, just so we can give an update of where spending is?
Well, we could give you a status report on it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And so also, the question of to authorize this or not, you've basically already done it, right? So it's not much, if we said no, it's not like it could not happen. It's already essentially happened, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. And obviously, we don't like to do that in this case. In the balance of asking for forgiveness or racking up the delay charges, we felt like we had to take this action.
Gotcha. So if we were to say no, it's already done. I don't know where the money's, we would have, they would have a claim. We've signed an agreement, right? It's not like they just went off on their own.
That is correct.
So we've directed them to spend, to expend these services, and bottom line is, we need to pay for it.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'd prefer not to vote for 350. I'd prefer to vote for 325.
Is that a motion? I'll second it. Is that a motion to amend?
Yes, that would be a motion to amend, Mr. Z's motion.
All right. So we need to take a vote on that motion.
How do we do that?
Take a vote on that motion.
You take a vote on the motion to amend, and then you then take the, your final vote on whatever the motion is before you even, either the original one or the amended motion?
Right.
All right. So if we, if it did come in at the lower amount, you would likely come back to us and ask, would that be right for additional funds if you needed additional funds?
Yeah. So the point is well taken. We would have to come back to you and ask for an additional allocation, and it would likely be after the fact as well, because the clock is ticking on these things. And so we don't want to do that. You know, on that, on that point, the point is spot on.
Let me advise my fellow colleagues here. For those of you that have done construction, it could be the rest of the people on this table, that when you need that extra 25K, and we don't meet for another six days, how are you going to do that? Because that's all time-critical. You have not done the first bit of testing on this. You can expect 5% or more in your critical structures, your blades, your server rooms. I talked about all this stuff. If you have done no testing, you're going to burn up that time, and that's what this money's for. Not additional work, but rework. So this time, it's ticking by my guns here. You can do what you want, and if it goes over the cliff again, I'll be the first to say, I told you so.
All right. Then I'll withdraw my motion and just, if there's money to pay for it, don't spend more than we need, I suppose.
Yeah, give us a status update.
Give us a status update.
All right. So we've got a motion on the table. Do we have a second as well on that?
Second motion, yes.
I'm sorry. You have the motion to amend?
Well, no, that's been withdrawn, though.
It's been withdrawn.
So we, but the original motion?
So the original motion is the 350,000?
We have a second on that one?
Yes, you do.
All right. Madam Clerk, on the original motion?
Can I, wait a minute. So is it implied in this motion, the discussion? Can I, wait a minute. So, is it implied in this motion, the discussion that we had about intensively pursuing our legal interests? Do we need to amend the motion, or is that...
I don't know that you need to amend the motion, because the motion is really about the contract, but that's clearly understood. I mean, if you wish to do something more with it, you could, but the motion is really about authorizing this contract for this amount of money.
All right, so we've got a motion, we've got a second. Unless there's further discussion, let's just take a vote. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Zee?
Yes.
Mayor Charter? Yes.
Let's see. Motion carries five to one with one abstention.
All right, let's keep on moving. Is there any business not on the agenda?
That was the $350, or the original?
$350.
$350.
It was the $350.
There was, the motion to amend was withdrawn, so that, so they went back, and that was the motion on the agenda item.
Proponent of the amendment, Mary Beth Connolly.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries five to two.
All right, let's move on to business not on the agenda. Is there any business not on the agenda? And by the way, Mr. Shields would like to give us an update on the status of discussions, negotiations in a closed session, if you all are so inclined, briefly afterwards. So, just plant that seed for you all. Any business not on the agenda? All right, any standing regional committees or council liaison reports? Any council member comments?
Just to note that Thursday at 9:00, the Economic Development Committee meets.
All right. So, as I just mentioned a moment ago, there is a possibility of closed session for an update on discussions, continuing discussions about the CA and other aspects of the West Falls Church Campus Project. And we're going to see if anyone wants to go into closed session for that update. I'm going to read a motion, and we'll see if there's any support for that. Upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
All right, seconded by council member...
Zee.
All right. And passed by a vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8, consultation with legal counsel employed retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Contracts for the West Falls Church Campus Project. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yeah.
Councilmember Zee?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter? Yes. All right, why don't we take a five-minute break, get the cameras down, use the restrooms, we'll reconvene. I think that's all I've got on the agenda, so that'll be it. Thank you. All right, let's come out of our closed session upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
Secuted by council member...
Duncan.
And passed upon a vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Zee?
Yes.
Carter? Yep. All right, it is 10:58 or so. This is certification upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
Secuted by council member...
Duncan.
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session. It was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by city council. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Zee?
Yes.
Carter? Yep. All right.
Good journey.
All right, let's do it.